All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen City Council Meeting. Uh, for those of you who haven't attended before, in the front and in the back of the room, our American flags displayed, whichever way is comfortable for you to face. If you would please, at this time, join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Ms. Parker, would you take the roll, please?
Atchison.
Here.
Demott.
Here.
Manke.
Here.
Sykes.
Here.
Scully.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Members of the council, before you, the next item on the agenda is item three A, that's the minutes of the December seventeenth, twenty eighteen meeting. Ms. Sykes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the City Council approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December seventeenth, twenty eighteen, as presented.
Okay, Ms. Demott.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And myself, as well. Any objections? If not, then the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is the presentations. We have none for tonight. Next item will be citizen communication. There is a process for citizen communication. We want to make sure everyone's fully understanding. Each person is allowed to come to the podium, which is in the front. If, uh, I'll call you up by name if you've signed up. After I'll go through all those who've signed up, then we'll go to those who still have comments but have not signed up. Each person is authorized up to five minutes. You may speak on any subject you have. Your time starts when the green light comes on. After that, you have one minute left. The yellow light will come on, and then finally, when your time is up, the red light will come on. If there's any item on the agenda that is required for a public hearing, we ask you not to talk on that item. You will get a chance during the public hearing to do that, and tonight, we do not currently have any schedule. See, I have approximately a half a dozen people who have signed up. We'll take them in the order that they've signed up. Abida Lazari, if I pronounced it right. Your time is, so you can get to the podium.
My name is Abidi Arizari, and I live within my body. The reason why I'm here is because my dear friend, political activist, okay, and protester, is in jail for ninety days, sentenced by this city for the horrific crime of sidewalk chalking. And I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for saving your city from this horrendous criminal, for this horrendous crime. But there seems to be a funny caveat to that, and that is that Officer Argonbright, which is the same officer who arrested my friend, who is now a political prisoner for sidewalk chalk, okay, was now put out of the department for rape. He raped a woman that trusted him. Why? Because that uniform is supposed to bring trust, a good feeling of warm and fuzzy safety. The reason why I stand before you today like this, it's not to humiliate myself, it's not to, you know, to make a mockery of this place, okay? I believe in justice. I believe in the Constitution, and I believe in true law, because it keeps us safe and it makes us the greatest country that everybody used to envy, okay? And the reason why I'm up here like this is because this is what you feel like when you're before people who you have no power whatsoever. You can't speak your mind, because the city of Westminster has waged a war on the First Amendment. They have waged a war on the nu- on the very first amendment, which is one that guarantees us the right to seek redress of our government and be able to say it at times, maybe in an unpleasant way. Maybe not agreeable to society, or whatever it may be. But the very reason of protest and activism is to cause a stirring, a discomfort, something that makes you angry. I'm angry. I'm angry. If it would have happened to any one of you ladies, you know where I'm coming from. If it would have been your daughter, or your sister, or your mother, you all would have been standing out there with me with a piece of chalk in your hand and yelling just as loud as I was. My friend Chalks, because he's the only one in the city that stands up for the homeless, the disenfranchised, the downtrodden, the ones who suffer from invisibility and have no one to speak for them, because they're just bums, right? They're just alcoholics, and they're just drug addicts. Get them off my lawn. As long as I don't see them, they don't bother me. And when he spoke up for them, this man right here has tried very hard to silence him, and this city has spent an ungodly amount of money to silence that man and his speech. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Ashamed of yourselves. How can you sit there and justify the same sentence for a protester, for a rapist? Rapist! My friend is in jail right now, and there had to be thousands of phone calls coming in there, okay, to save him. They were already setting him up. Oh, he might be suicidal. They put him in the psycho ward, right? They put him around the crazies, right? They don't attend to all the prisoners in the jail, right? He had two men falling in front of him, okay, from head injuries, from severe beatings. They still haven't seen a doctor or a brain scan. It's not yours, because this is Westminster City. That's the Adams County Jail. That's another one, right? But it's pretty much the same evil entity, right? Beating on my friend for doing good things. A man who served his country in the Navy, he got out with a disability check, and the tens of thousands of dollars that he might win in settlements, he gives it all back to the same people he speaks up for. He can get a hundred thousand dollars, and he's broke before the end of the week, because he gave it away. That's the man that you have a problem with. That's the man that your ego was-
Your time is up, sir.
Does anybody wish to give me their time?
No, you cannot. Your time is up. You don't get to give somebody else your time.
I'm sure, Herb. I'm sure.
Have a seat.
I'm sure.
Looks like America's Calmer. Mr. Calmer, how are you tonight?
Respect to you. Uh, yeah, my name is Amerikus, and I would like to get, uh, bring up some stuff here, but I'm concerned. Uh, I will start out with California, and I just ask you to consider, we are not going this way. The problem was with California, the gold city, they spent too much, too much charity, and ended up with all money. Intra-facture gone, streets are dirty, drug pushing, drug use, violence on the streets, looks like a third-world country, Venezuela. So, that is not the way to go. I hope you will see it. What I once mentioned, the charity takes away the money from the real job, real, real obligation. And, uh, if you choose charity, then you will lose the town, like California doing. I just ask your consideration on this one. If there is any agenda, it should be agenda to protect people and protect the well-being of everybody, same way. And I was traveling to Denver a couple of days ago, and I looked out the window, I saw a terrible thing. These were buildings, dark buildings, little boxes, narrow boxes. And I was thinking, that's how the city should look like. And meantime, I got an email telling me, hey, we have a senior citizen, uh, homes. You could go to the senior citizen housing. And I told myself, why, why? The seniors are on the limited income. Then we raise the water fee, and that means, and raise all kind of taxes, healthcare, all the things. The old people, the senior citizens, will go down, and they will have to go to this jail, to these boxes, and leave their life there. And it's a terrible thing to do. Um, I just speak for the seniors, because I am sure they're on the side of what I'm saying. And, uh, I hope no agenda will put purposely seniors into the boxes that looks to me like jails. Basically, uh, these are the things what I wanted to say, and I heard something on the police scandal. I usually don't believe it until somebody proves it. Accusation is not equal being guilty. Kavanaugh case proved it, and I hope we are not going this way. Just somebody else accused and presumed is guilty. And, uh, thank you very much for listening, and I'll bless you.
Angela Filolovos?
Hello.
Hi.
Is this just for comments?
Yes, ma'am. Up to five minutes.
No, no questions.
We don't answer questions during this period, ma'am, whatever comments you have.
If I could ask a question, I guess I would ask, what the logic in giving our friend Eric Brandt the same sentence as a cop who had raped someone who didn't get nearly enough time? Why did my friend, who advocates for people, who helps people all the time, all the time, Eric is flooded with people that, that, that look up to him, and he does his best to make time for everybody? And I'm thinking, I'm thinking, what if Eric were a bad guy, and Eric made a bad decision, and Eric did something really bad? You would be saying, if you were that mad, you could have did anything. You could have even got a piece of chalk and wrote all over, but you didn't have to do what you did. He did what he had a right to do, and he, he was condemned for it. I don't, I don't, I don't understand that. Eric is much more useful out here than any cop who is, who is a rapist. He's getting three months, and he's gonna get out, and he's, he's gonna be patrolling. He's gonna be pulling people over, right? Is that what he is, a police officer? Yeah, that's what he's gonna do. And then he's gonna violate somebody else. A rapist? Are you serious? Rapists keep raping. That's what they do. Remember that. And remember that the Lord will use the same judgment with you that you have used on others. Free Eric Brandt.
And next up, I have Janet Mattson.
I gotta say, free Eric Brandt, too, okay? Good guy. But I want to talk about a cop that killed this guy here in Westminster. Let me put my glasses on. I want to know where the report is for the Westminster cop being cleared for shooting and killing Timmy Henley. It's been since September, and your cops shot and killed this man. Shouldn't there be a report? It should have already had been delivered clearing. Shouldn't the report have already been delivered, clearing your cops from any wrongdoing? Why don't your cops wear body cams? Why do, why is there no dash cams in use? Westminster Police didn't murder Timothy Henley in cold blood and are now trying to cover it up. Free Eric Brandt, huh? It's a shame.
Regan Benson? Ms. Benson or Mr. Benson in the room? Okay, we'll move on. Is there anyone who did not sign up that wishes to come forward at this time? You have the same opportunity.
I'd like to come up.
Sure. Identify yourself since you didn't sign up.
Elijah Westbrook. I'd like to also say, free Eric Brandt. A man who is exercising his First Amendment right to voice his opinions and beliefs, is in jail right now for sidewalk chalk. I mean, come on. If a little kid was out there doing sidewalk chalk, are you gonna lock them up? But a grown man who served for this country, spent eight years serving for this country, is sitting in jail right now in a cage for sidewalk chalk. Free Eric Brandt.
Anyone else? I see no one else. We'll close the public comment period and move on. All right, next item up is a report of city officials. Mr. Tripp? All right, thank you. Members of council, is there anyone who has any comments that they'd like to add tonight? Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two announcements tonight that I'd like to address. Um, the first one is, is I had the privilege of attending the inclusive board meeting last Wednesday night. Always a privilege on the second Wednesday of every month. Starts at six PM, and it is held in the community room downstairs. And I just wanted to say that, um, there is no better way to be involved in your city than to attend our public, open-to-the-public board and commission meetings. Great way to learn about the city and gain understanding about what's going on in the city and, um, what you need to be aware of. So, please plan to attend those meetings. And then, the second thing that I wanted to talk about was, um, sadly, many of our federal employees are currently unemployed and waiting for the government to reopen. Um, the city of Westminster has a water bill assistance available for federal government employees. So, if you are currently experiencing hardship, um, and you are a federal employee, we offer a water assistance program. We also offer a water assistance program to anyone who is experiencing hardship. So, please check out our website. Um, you can either go to accesswestminster.com, or you can go straight to the website and pull up the water, pull up the, um, the menu bar and click water, and it will take you right to all the information you need on how to gain assistance for your water bills.
Ms. Manke?
Hello. Hi, I just wanted to say hello. This is my first, um, council meeting since my appointment last month. Um, just want to say that I'm so honored to, uh, serve the people of Westminster. Really excited to speak with you all and hear your concerns and your voice in our city. So, just want to say hello. My information is on the website, my cellphone, and my email. So, please reach out and be working to reach out to all of you in the next couple of months as well. So, thank you.
Ms. Sykes?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Um, I think it's really important for us to hear from all of our constituents, um, even when it's difficult conversations. So, thank you. Um, I want to say Happy New Years to everyone. This New Year's, I decided as a resolution, what I'm gonna do is focus on gratitude and appreciation for the many blessings that I have. Um, and I have to say, tonight, it was good to have that focus, because instead of being blue, as I saw my amazing former colleagues here, and we, we bid them farewell, I thought about all of the amazing things that I did with them that I'm so appreciative of. Um, and whether that was dedicating, um, energy towards affordable housing, working on homelessness, encouraging, um, a partnership with the school districts. Um, we have done so many things, um, that I think have propelled this community, um, in the right direction, and I really appreciate the time and the leadership. Um, and I'm excited for my colleagues to be able to continue to continue their leadership, um, and, and give from a different platform. I would also like to say, I am grateful, um, for how many residents applied for our vacancy, um, for Maria De Canberra's seat. And I am thankful that we found Sheila Manke to fill that seat. Um, I have absolute confidence in her ability to continue to lead this city well, thoughtfully, um, and with future generations in mind. I also just want to thank this community. Um, we give back a lot in Westminster. Um, as a community, we volunteer many hours, um, saving the city, literally millions of dollars, um, in, in volunteer labor. Um, I was at a meeting this week where we worked on sexual assault awareness and prevention, and I had leaders from every sector of our community there, including our police department, our school districts, Front Range Community College. This is a community that wants to make sure that everyone is safe and protected. Um, and I really have to say, I applaud, um, the police department's leadership in really starting by believing, um, and then investigating. I think it's, uh, something all of us should, should, um, cling to. I also got to go to our parks, recs, open space, and libraries board, um, where they're looking to figure out how to make their grants more equitable and accessible for all of Westminster residents, including the Harris Park area. Um, so I really think that one of the things I've seen is this expanded desire to be a welcoming and inclusive city. Um, and I want to say thank you to our, our residents for really embracing that goal. Um, and finally, I want to say thank you to the city, um, staff. I live in a really amazing community. I have a really high quality of life, and my children love where they're from. And that's because of all of the, the work that you provide every single day. So, I'm grateful for lots of things tonight.
Any other comments from council? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. This is a group of routine matters that are acted on as a single motion from the council. The council has reviewed the items on the consent agenda. No one has asked for having any item removed. At this point, I will accept a motion for the consent agenda. Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the City Council adopt consent agenda items eight A through eight C.
Ms. Scully?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a vote with your lights. Would you use your button, please? And the motion carries on a five-o vote. Moving on to the next item, this is a public hearings and other new business. First item is an adoption of resolution number one, authorizing the center manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation. Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number one, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation regarding traffic signal maintenance for eleven intersections along the Sheridan Boulevard corridor for a five-year term.
Mr. Demott?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion by council? Seeing none. Ms. Parker, this is a roll call vote, if you would, please.
Atchison.
Yes.
Demott.
Yes.
Manke.
Yes.
Sykes.
Yes.
Scully.
Yes.
Motion passes on a five oh vote. Next item up is item B one. Ms. Sights?
Thank you. I move to pass councilor's bill number one on first reading appropriating lease proceeds of one million thirty-nine thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars to the General Capital Outlay Replacement Fund, PST, for the lease purchase of one Velocity Chassis Pierce Ultimate Configuration, one hundred and seven foot ascendant aerial ladder truck.
Ms. Scully?
My second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? This is also a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Demond.
Yes.
Manke.
Yes.
Sights.
Yes. Scully.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes. Motion passes on a five oh vote. Would you continue, Ms. Sights, with item B two, please?
I move to adopt resolution number two to authorize the city manager to sign a financing agreement in substantially the same format as presented in an amount not to exceed one million thirty-nine thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars over seven years with Zion's Bank Corporation NA to finance the purchase of one Velocity Chassis Pierce Ultimate Configuration, one hundred and seven foot ascendant aerial ladder truck from Front Range Apparatus Limited.
Ms. Scully?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on item B two? Seeing none, this is also a roll call vote, if you would. Ms. Parker?
Manke.
Yes.
Sights.
Yes. Scully.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes.
Demond.
Yes.
Motion carries on a five oh vote. Next item up is item B three. Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the trade-in of unit five one two four, a Pierce dash seventy-five foot aerial ladder truck for a credit of forty thousand dollars with Front Range Fire Apparatus Limited.
Ms. Sights?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? Item B three, this is a vote with your buttons, please. The motion carries on a five oh vote. Next item up is item B four. Ms. Sights?
I move to authorize the city manager to execute a contract in substantially the same format as presented with Front Range Fire Apparatus Limited in an amount not to exceed one million two hundred seventeen thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars for the purchase of one Velocity Chassis Pierce Unlimited Configuration, one hundred and seven foot ascendant aerial ladder truck, which includes a contingency of ten thousand.
Ms. Scully?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item B four. Is there any other discussion by council? Seeing none, ladies and gentlemen, this is also a vote with your button. Motion carries on a five oh vote. Next item up is council's bill number seven. Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass councillor's bill number two on first reading, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement with Colorado Sound Recording LTD for thirty-eighty West Seventy-first Avenue in substantially the same form as the agreement presented.
Ms. Manke? Do a second.
My second.
Okay, thank you. Council, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, this is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Sights.
Yes. Scully.
Yes.
Atchison.
Yes.
Demond.
Yes.
Manke.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, this motion also carries on a five oh vote. Next item on the agenda is old business and passes of ordinance on second reading. This is council's bill number fifty-four. Ms. Sights?
I move to pass councillor's bill number fifty-four on second reading exempting from the twelve-month moratorium on the acceptance of new development applications for projects that increase sewer demand in the Big Dry Creek Interceptor Sewer pre-application requests for which a comprehensive plan amendment application is required and was submitted more than six months prior to and no later than the moratorium effective date.
Ms. Scully?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on councillor's bill number fifty-four? Ms. Sights?
I have to say, I want to again compliment staff on finding a way to, I guess, help some more of our landowners and developers in the community find a way that they can go forward with their projects. And so the way that we dealt with the capacity issues, I think, is really tremendous, and I'm glad that we can be responsive and help more people through the pike.
Other comments? And in regards to this item fifty-four, this was up with us a couple of weeks ago, and at that time I voted negative to this being an emergency ordinance because I didn't feel it was appropriate. I still have some issues with the fact that we're finding an exception for four contractors, but we're not able to totally lift this moratorium so that everyone can apply for the additional pieces. I'm still concerned about the moratorium still being in effect. I know the staff is still working diligently to come up with an overall plan that we'll get through this and then at some point in the future be able to get this moratorium lifted and explain to everyone what the new process will be and what our plan fixes and budget and our timelines will be. But to that point, I'm still not happy with the exception. I appreciate all the work the staff did. But I would rather have seen us get to the point where we could say the moratorium is done and here's what we're going to have to do to fix it. So I will be a negative vote. This is a roll call vote. If you would, Ms. Parker?
Scully.
Yes.
Atchison.
No.
Demond.
Yes.
Manke.
Yes.
Sights.
Yes.
Waiting for one more. There we go, okay. Motion passes on a four to one vote, and we are done with the city business. If you would, please, council, turn over your motions. We are adjourned as the Westminster City Council, and we are now reconvening as the Westminster Economic Development Authority. First item on our agenda is item two A and has approval of the minutes of December the seventeenth. And Mr. Demond?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the board approve the minutes of December seventeenth twenty eighteen meeting as presented.
Ms. Scully?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. We have one item with business tonight, and that is item three A. Ms. Scully, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to authorize the executive director to enter into an agreement with Murray Dahlberry and Rinald LLP for work related to the downtown Westminster project and general urban renewal and eminent domain matters in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
Mr. Demond?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on item three A of the Wido Agenda? Hearing none, this is a vote with your buttons, please, council. Okay, my apologies, ladies and board of directors. We have a motion that has a vote of five to nothing. The motion is therefore carried. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes the business of the Westminster Economic Development Authority. We will take a short pause and then we will reconvene in a post-meeting. This meeting is open for the public to listen to, but we will not be communicating with the public as we're continuing to figure out the process by which vacancy of two people on the council will be filled and the council will be studying and reviewing what the process that we're going to finish. You're more than welcome to sit and listen. You can sit right where you are. If there's room in the adjoining room, you can also join us in there, but everything will be broadcast out here to this room. We will take a five-minute pause and then we'll reconvene.